13, 2019, special council meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 7 o'clock. The pledge of allegiance will be given by Councilmember Larson and invocation by Councilmember Borders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight to thank you for everything that you've bestowed upon us, for all the great things that are going on in our community, and we ask for your guidance in helping us to make good decisions for our community. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Would the city clerk please conduct roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Here.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schatz.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Mayor Richard Gard.
Here. The Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Councilman Rota.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Larson and a second by Councilwoman Schatz. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I declare quorum present. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Schatz and a second by Councilwoman Borders. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Public hearing to consider firework permit for rendezvous games. City Clerks report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mayor and Council before you tonight for your consideration is a fireworks permit application submitted by the Community Engagement Committee for the Riverton Rendezvous Games at Riverton City Park on August 16th, 2019, from 8:30 PM to 9:00 PM. The conditions of the permit application has been completed, the letter of recommendation from the Fire Chief has been received, and proper notice to the public has been advertised, and included in your packet is a map of where the fireworks will be displayed. In addition, we do have a representative who sits on council in attendance tonight. Based on the information provided through the application process, staff recommends approval of the fireworks permit application as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Councilman Bailey has the motion and Councilwoman Borders has a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I now declare a public hearing open. Public hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statute and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record.
Your Honor, seeing none, I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Bailey, second by Councilman Hancock. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I now declare the public hearing closed. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve fireworks permit application for rendezvous games.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Hancock and a second by Councilwoman Borders. Any further discussion? Councilman Larson.
There was an article tonight in the Riverton Ranger on that the fireworks had failed and the individual, she didn't, when she wrote the letter, she didn't include her name on it, but she said that her dogs were having problems. I have a dog like that and I can feel her pain, but I do feel that fireworks lend a certain experience, if you will, to a town, and the Fourth of July, New Year's Eve, and next, the rendezvous games will benefit from that, and I realize that some animals just don't like the noise, and I'm sorry about that, but they probably don't like backfires from trucks or any other things, and this is, we live in a city worth people and with our pets, but we must least enjoy our surroundings. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Convene into the work session, the Chair would entertain a motion to convene into the work session at 7:08.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Schatz and a second by Councilman Larson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The 2019 Master Plan Review, Community Directors' Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bear with me while I get my, got a brief presentation to introduce the master plan and...
I thought you were trying to escape.
How to use it?
You're just gonna get ready.
Easy there, Tony.
Drinking can be dangerous for your health.
Yeah.
You take that picture, Eric?
Actually, I did. This is pretty. That's the Buffalo River right below the Grand Tetons. Nice little section of river to fish. All right. Darn slide shoe.
Funny, I went through that whole project, I didn't see that picture.
They didn't have any pictures that nice.
Oh. Okay, so we're here to discuss the Riverton Master Plan. The intent of the whole plan was to update the 2009 plan. Those master plans generally have a shelf life of about 10 years. Well, it's 2019, so here we are, and we've got a new master plan that was conducted by Ayers Associates out of Cheyenne, Wyoming. They're a nationwide firm, so they've got an immense amount of resources to draw from. During the development of the plan, they used the same major categories and community goals that were originally established in the 2009 plan. That was the intent when we wrote the RFP. It was full of good ideas that were general enough to move forward with another plan, but we also wanted to make this very functional and strategic. The, some of the misgivings of the 2009 plan were, we had great goals, we just didn't have the staircase to get to those goals, and so Ayers has done a fantastic job with that. It's intended for use by staff, the Planning Commission, and council, and as I said before, we focused more on action than high-in-the-sky goals for the city, and hopefully we'll be better off for our near-term changes. During the plan development, we contracted with Ayers Associates in 2018, in October of 2018, and from there, they began studying the 2009 plan, they began laying out public meetings. We had public meetings in both February and April. As part of those public meetings, we also had focus groups for each one of the six strategic plans that were detailed in the request for proposal. So we had stakeholder groups, the public meetings, we also had an online survey. We had 155 responses to our online survey, which for a community this size is pretty darn exceptional. We did advertising, we had the, everything on the city website, and we posted on Facebook several times. We obviously, through statutory requirements, made our advertisements that we had to in the newspaper. We also did direct emails to our stakeholders, and then they also developed a Project 101 pamphlet as well as a video. I don't know if any of you saw the video when we first started the master planning process, but that was not even part of the contractual obligation. That was something Ayers did on their own, and it's kind of a fantastic look at Riverton, so. How do we use the plan? That's the biggest thing. So the main plan components were, they formed a welcome and introduction, and that goes over a lot of the information from the Office of Economic Development at the State of Wyoming. Oh, what is it? Office of Information Administration and Information, Economic Analysis Division. And then they broke the master plan into chapters, which were the six individual strategic plans. Then they worked from there into action work plans, and they also included case studies. Because they're a nationwide firm, they've had a lot of, or seen a lot of successes from various towns around the country, and they provided that information with a similar goal that we have. And then in the appendices, we've got the reference documents, and then all of the materials that were generated through the public meetings, the boards, we put stickers on things that were important throughout the city, and that's really the important thing to realize tonight is, all of the information generated in the master plan that we have before us was based on those stakeholder meetings and the input from the public meetings and the engagement survey that we had online. So here are our plan chapters. As, again, it's six. We've got Community Development Design Standards, Land Use, Economic Development, Tribal Partnerships, Transportation, and Parks and Recreation. That pretty much covers all of the concerns that a city of our size would have. And this is just a copy of the table of contents from the master plan, and you can see it's very well laid out, but we've got our, each chapter and then each page associated with it. This is a great example of one of the work plans. It comes out of the economic development portion, and what's really nice about the work plans is we have a defined goal. We need to define Riverton's identity. That was a reoccurring comment through the public input process. Okay, how do we do that? Well, one idea might be to explore place-making strategies to make Riverton appeal to locals and visitors. What is place-making? We set up little micro parks, we do a mural somewhere, we do, you know, make it feel nice to be there. Make it a good place to be. So how do we get from here to having those places made? They give us key steps, and these get super specific. Confirm the most critical locations from place-making in Riverton. Make them and name them so that they have defined, that they're defined geographically. That's a great first step. Consider focus special attention on downtown, as it's the most unique place in Riverton and most likely to attract visitors and local. Special design elements like lighting and landscape treatments help to create pleasant environment. It's not specific, but it's not super broad either, and again, these are conceptual ideas moving forward. If it's a great idea, great. If it doesn't work, let's move on to something that does work. This is a guiding document. Future land use, table and map, this was, they wanted to signify zoning and zoning regulations are becoming more and more broad so that you have some flexibility to do things unique in communities. And then we also, they wanted to focus on mitigating impact. When you get two zones but up against each other, there's generally potential, higher potential for conflict. So if you've got agricultural and industrial, there may be some noise issues. If you've got residential and industrial, there can definitely be some considerations that need to be taken into account. So how do we mitigate those for blending uses? So here's, you know, you'll notice this is very similar to what we see in conjunction with our current zoning map. It's very similar, but again, we're broadening those definitions, we're easing the lines of potential conflict. They also have additional resources that come with this. As part of the funding for this project, it was partially funded through a grant from the Wyoming Business Council, and as such, we needed to update the Riverton Economic Development Plan. So while there is a task associated with the master plan for economic development, they have also regenerated the economic development plan that Idea Inc. uses to guide their decision-making process. So we'll have that, the Idea Inc. work plan. They also gathered a brief amount of GIS data or geographic system data. We don't currently have a GIS department or program, but having some of that data in hand will be great when we do, because it's one of our council goals for fiscal year 20, so. And then, they also went around town and took a whole bunch of really cool photos. So if we need some photos for the website or for additional advertising, we can use their photos. The adoption process, this is set by state statute and by city code. They delivered their final draft, and we posted it for public comment on June 5th. Planning Commission certified and approved the plan, the master plan on the 17th meeting, and obviously, city council adoption is pending, hopefully, soon. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions. I do have the master plan here if you want specific page questions, but that's basically it in a nutshell.
Kyle?
You don't want to go first, Mike.
Go ahead.
In reviewing this, it talked about downtown with off-street parking and parking in the rear of most buildings. Unless I've been in the wrong city for the last 20 years, we don't have a lot of off-street parking or parking in the rear. Is that one of those ideas that we just jettison?
Your Honor?
Yes.
So the off-street parking for new commercial development would be recommended for in the rear. For downtown specifically, there is no room. One of the recommendations that they wrote about was for diagonal parking on the side streets of downtown. That could potentially open up additional parking. One of the ideas that was kicked around, and I don't, it was not included in the final plan, was to remove the medians on US 26 on Main Street, put diagonal parking in there. That, again, that didn't make it in there, but the recommendation for parking in the rear or the side of the buildings would be for new commercial development, say such as, and this may or may not be a good example, but the Eastern Shoshone Business Park, as they build out their commercial properties, and if they have contiguous buildings, it would be a good idea to have parking to the side or to the rear, to soften the street view.
Kyle?
Then, an additional one was, there was a lot of addressing for dining or patios or sitting places on the main street. Last time we had that, we had a lady that wanted to serve and the Department of Roads vetoed that. There's a rule against having that type of development on the sidewalk. So there's, there's just a lot of inconsistencies in a master plan that we're supposed to be following.
Your Honor?
Yes.
So it would be important to keep in mind that a lot of these recommendations are not for a specific location, but as a broad overview of the entire city. So what would not work, yes, having outdoor seating along Main Street in front of a restaurant, say, Cowboy Cafe.
I would love it.
I would absolutely love it. Some of that are hands with YDOT regulation or right-of-way widths. The important thing is, when they make those recommendations in the master plan, they say, "Explore, make, you know, place-making along Main Street." Okay, well, that might be a short trip. We might explore it and determine, nope, you can't do that. You could do it on a side street, maybe that would work, but as long as we explore it, it's a good idea. It's worked in other places, and having dealt a lot with YDOT, a firm no maybe isn't so firm. If you can talk to them and start reasoning through processes, you can get them to change regulations, but sometimes it's a very short trip.
Mike?
In the transportation chapter, you know, goal number one's improve safety at key intersection, which is great. I agree with that, okay? But goal number six says minimize long-term maintenance costs, but then it talks about, again, in goal one, explore alternatives for increased safety by, and roundabouts, which would increase maintenance costs, not to mention are really expensive, and I understand these are just, you know, options that we need to look at, but my experience with the roundabouts that I've found is, the public has a real challenge with those. You know, Riverton is a very commercially oriented town, and I think, you know, we need to embrace that because that's sort of what we are. So I mean, we're not Jackson Hole or Boulder or, you know, some of those places, and that's all great, but, you know, I think, for example, they put a roundabout over in Jackson right up out by the airport, okay? I have commercial trucks. There's only two ways in and out of Jackson, one from the north and one from the south, and there's a roundabout both directions coming into town, okay? So every semi that delivers products to Jackson has to go through those roundabouts, which were built not much bigger than this room, and to get a semi around one, you need to be about three times as big as this room. And so, you know, that's my experience with roundabouts is, you know, yeah, it's all great if you've got this big, huge sparse piece of ground that you're going to develop and you can put a roundabout in there and, you know, make it big enough that a semi can go around in that circle, then maybe that would work, but it gets challenging, you know, and it sure does not reduce long-term maintenance costs, because there's a lot more pavement in a roundabout than there is in a regular four-way intersection. And so I guess some of this stuff's a little contradictory to me. You know, I'm all for making our town look nice, but I don't think we want to turn it into Jackson Hole, you know, and have every sign have to be wrapped in wood and only the, you know, I was in Laramie last week, and they've got a bunch of those monument signs, and you have a hard time finding anything you're looking for driving down the street on those things. You know, every, every business has a little six-inch by two-foot sign on this little monument for a whole block development. It's really tricky to find stuff. So, again, I think some of this aesthetic stuff is great to keep in mind, but I don't think we want to limit ourselves to deterring commercial activity, because that's really what Riverton's all about. And, and so I guess that's where I have a little issue with that. There's one place in there that it says we want to reduce, you know, the out sprawl of the town. Well, that's all great, other than we just approved 300 acres being brought into Riverton that out sprawls our town. So, you know, we're being a little contradictory, right? And so that's, that's what gets tricky to me. So we got to be careful. If we want to use this as a working document for, for planning and all that, we're sort of sometimes saying one thing and doing another when, you know, when the opportunity arises, and that's fine, but I guess that's the issues I sort of have with it. I mean, it's a little bit too warm and fuzzy for life.
Tony and I have worked on a draft. Do you have that that we'd like to add to this conversation?
Yes, Your Honor. One of the items that the mayor and, if I may, Your Honor.
Please.
One of the items that was brought up, just as Councilman Bailey denoted, is a concern about some of these items coming up where we talk about a roundabout, for instance, and the idea of the roundabout is, does it move traffic? Yes. Comparatively, are there, are vehicular accidents associated with them statistically less severe? Yeah. It's glancing blows compared to direct, okay, but they're also, take up a ton of space, and they also are costly. Those are, things are true. These are, one of the challenges of any such document that you're considering is that we're trying to look into the future and say, "What if?" And they're, and it's largely, I always think about it as largely meant to start a conversation or continue one. So, but making sure that we understand that the document before you is meant to be a guiding document. Hey, you need to look at this. We've talked previously about it being updated every two to three years, and that's important, because there may be items that come up that say a roundup, all of a sudden, sunset, and the entire area right there develops, and all of a sudden, you got a school and multiple medical facilities and multiple, another terminal, and all of a sudden, traffic changes, okay? At that point, it might be useful and it might not, and then we modify it to adjust, and five years later, it could change again. That's the way of these things. But in order to keep it as a, discuss it more as a visioning document, one of the verbiage that we came up with is, to include with this at the very beginning, is that the Riverton Master Plan is meant to be a guiding document used for the physical development of the city and future community improvements. The items contained herein are guidelines to be considered during future planning efforts and design. Further study and engineering may be required prior to implementation of particular recommendations, which may or may not coincide with the recommendations contained within the master plan. All items are subject to future amendment and modification at the discretion and approval of the Riverton City Council. of the Riverton City Council. What that does for you is it makes it very clear on the onset, page one, that obviously we want to make sure that this is, you know, these are some ideas. If we can get seating downtown, that would be wonderful. A lot of people like to sit outside. I think it's nice. We know we have challenges, and ideas like placemaking are modified all the time. I did a placemaking class, I guess you'd call it, session with Wyoming Business Council about all the different little things, and it modifies all the time, and it encompasses such a broad range of items that it can come up left and right, and that's going to change, and we're going to get new ideas. Great. The, you're absolutely, but in taking the vision and saying, "We want to improve it. Here's one option." Okay, that's not going to work. So, take Sunset, that's an easy one. And we look at it, and it gets improved, and I think we're talking about it at force. So, that gets improved in two years, and we look at it, and we say, "Well, great, that's this much money, and we don't think that's feasible based on what we need." Okay, then we would remove that from the plan at that time if it's just not going to happen at improvement. We would consider it, we'd look at it, great. But I feel that with the item that's, with the verbiage that we provided, it does help give you that vision, and maybe allows you that flexibility moving forward. But we wanted to make sure you had some verbiage to work with. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. I think the importance of that verbiage is, is that sometimes we look at this planning document, and, you know, if you don't have a plan, you're not moving forward. So, at least a plan is important, and yet, it may be a multitude of things that make it difficult to do what's in the plan, and things change. You know, it wasn't too many years ago that we didn't have use of the Shoshone Business Park. And so, there were lots of ideas thrown out there. I met with Senator Enzie and Steve Wilson and the three members of the council last Friday. We discussed all of the plans that they had there. They're really way open. They don't know what they can find, they don't know how it's going to develop, but they want it to develop. And so, the flexibility to say, "Well, you know, we originally planned for this to be a water feature, but we can't afford that, so we're going to do something different," needs to be done. And so, that's why I think it's so important that we don't get the citizens believing that, where is the roundabout? First of all, we don't control Highway 26, last time I checked. That's the state of Wyoming, and it's a really nice roundabout. I just crashed my sight, but it's a really nice roundabout. I haven't seen many roundabouts with five legs, but it's on 88, if you can get the... And so, to start off with, that roundabout is not our control. Now, we could certainly suggest that the state take a look at that, and I think Mike Bailey is totally correct when he says, "That's difficult for a semi to go through." And so, when you stop and think about all the semi-traffic that comes through Riverton that has to, I was trying to remember the conversation I was in. It was a lady that said she got caught in a turnabout with a mort, where she was on a motorcycle with a semi, and that was a little bit exciting for a moment. And so, that was just this week, and so, I think those are coming attractions. I'm not trying to disparage those things, but if the state of Wyoming feels like that's a good thing for them to put in, they'll force it on us. And so, back as we go into the Sunset Division, we can see if you can go to Sunset's turnabout.
What page is that on?
That's on page here.
I'm on 94.
It always crashes on the EDF whenever you go to the roundabout.
94, page 94.
Every time.
When you've got a good machine.
On a laptop, it doesn't, it's just on a mobile device, it does.
So, I would like to point out, see how that has impaired the US Energy Lot and the lot across the street, how much ground it's taking into those properties? And so, if it works, and if the people want it, I think that that's something that could happen someday. I think we're going to get right down to it with the Force Committee, and we'll probably get a bid, and we'll have to see what's the most economical so that we spend our money correctly. So, I think, I think when we stop and put this explanation in the front of the planning, it gives, we're not so handcuffed to the fact that we approved roundabouts. What we've done is looked forward and tried to think of something that might be more beneficial than what we have today. And I think that's what we're suggesting, too, with the, it would be nice if we had curbs and gutters that ran clear out past the airport subdivisions, but that probably isn't going to happen either right away. And so, I think that's kind of important for the people that are going through that planning, that plan, to know that there's so many ifs on this. First of all, money is a big factor. Can you get us to the city park plan? You are much better at it than me. I really like this city park plan. I think it is exceptional, and I wish we could do it today. The only thing I don't like is those rows of trees because, as nice as those trees are, and our city park has some of the best trees in the state. I like trees, but looking through a row of trees makes an obstacle. But the off-street parking that is in that plan is a great idea, and there's three pieces of off-street parking, and so, that would really take the pressure off of the general activities of city park. And yet, do you, could you take a guess, Eric, what that might cost to change what we have now to what we would like there?
A lot.
And so, I just think that it's good for us to look forward and think of things that might be able, and, you know, we can, we can do this in pieces. We could do the southwest corner parking first, and then we could move ourselves back to the east side parking. It's not that we can't live without it, it's just we're going to have to find grants. And after sitting in the rooms that I've been sitting in lately and trying to find tax dollars and ways that we're going to get to tax dollars, Kyle mentioned earlier in the session tonight, the grant writers, it may be something that we have to go to. Right now, it's a really expensive option, but we may have to find ourselves a grant writer and specifically target items to find that money.
Your Honor?
Mm-hmm.
That is actually one of the recommendations in the report.
That's what we were talking about, that it's in the report.
It's in the report under economic development, and every other, every other, one, two, three is grant writer, find a grant writer, use a grant writer, develop a grant writer, and so it's really employment of grant writers. And that is not very realistic, but, but it would solve a lot of problems. That's not unrealistic, it's just...
We're going to have to be creative, and there's no need to take that off the table, but right now, we're reducing employees, not adding employees. And so, a grant writer is probably worth his weight in gold. If we get the right grant writer, he can probably pay his wage.
Well, grant writers normally benefit from the grant that they obtain. That is part of their income.
That's right.
You might, you might call that in Spanish, mordida, the bite, but that is included in the salary of the grant writer is his ability to bring in income.
You're not going to go Beto on us and start speaking Spanish, are you?
No, 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 no.
Okay. I just, I just think that that phrase is kind of an important thing so people can come back to that, that we, there's, all of these, all of these fingers go together to make that glove. And it doesn't mean that we can't have that park, we could work our way to it. So, thank you.
Just one thing.
Kyle?
That, that roundabout on what Mike's is talking about is, most cities have more than one way in and one way out, most cities. And so, I mean, we're fortunate, we've got three. So, we could have two turnarounds and still get a commercial vehicle into it, but most of this document, this living document, has lived in other neighborhoods longer than it's been in Wyoming because all of the stuff that they're talking about is from other areas other than Wyoming. When they talk about, "Don't get sprawling," they're talking about a population of Baltimore. They're not talking about Riverton where there's only 10,000, 12,000 people on a good day. They're talking about high density, so don't have high density. We don't have any high-density populations. We are looking to build on city lots as much as people want. So, I like that part that Tony's put in and Rich has put in, Mayor's put in, that we can adjust this, and if this is a living document and we're not bound by oath of office on this, then we can pass this. We can live with it, we can work with it. But if we're bound and we're going to get all sent to prison, then I'm bored.
Your Honor, I just wonder if it wouldn't make sense, I know you were thinking about putting that at the very beginning, but couldn't we just put that language directly in the resolution adopting it? I mean, and just saying, that's part of the resolution is that we're saying, we're adopting this, but we're understanding as we adopt it. This is something we're going to be changing. The only reason I say that is because the plan as it was adopted by the Planning Commission was without that language. So, if we just wanted to kind of say, "We're going to stick with what the Planning Commission gave us," I think the better way to do it would be to make the change in the resolution rather than putting it into the document itself.
I think that's our job is to oversight our committees and not just rubber stamp our committees. So, I think that we could take this and put it in the front of the document wherever it fits in the easiest. I think putting it in the document as somebody is perusing it five years from now will give them a general understanding that, yeah, we want all good ideas, we want to move forward, we want to be a progressive city, but now that you want this, how are you going to get density of housing? I don't think any of us really understand what density housing is. We haven't been to Baltimore and seen what real true density, 10-story-tall housing looks like, and so...
Where 20,000 people live in one building.
Right. And so, as a young man, I went and saw my uncle in Kansas City, and that's dense housing. I've never got in an elevator and went 90 floors in the air to his office, and so, that really isn't what we're talking about. And so, and I think people are practical when they, when they see that. I think Kyle's conception, a lot of us, is we just don't want to pass something and put it on the back of the future councils, and then sit back and say, "Where is that plan for city park 20 years from now?" When I'm in the old folks' homes saying, you know, "We're supposed to be able to park on the southeast corner of the park." That isn't the intent of what we want to do. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So, any other discussion? Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
I appreciate your presentation. The chair would entertain him to reconvene into the special meeting at 7:44.
I'm moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Bailey has her motion, second is Councilwoman Schatz, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Would it be possible for us to?
Yes. Mayor, I perused this for where I was going to stick you guys in at, and I don't have anybody there, but would you please address us? We would like to hear what you came to say.
Do we want a regular meeting or?
I'm out of here.
Mayor Warpeness, we're coming out of the work session into the special, back into, we're reconvening into the special meeting. Do you want to be in the special meeting, or do you want to be in the work session?
However you would prefer it, Mayor, it works for me.
Your Honor, there is a public hearing, and then after we convene into the special meeting, there is a public hearing.
Okay. We'll pick you up there. Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Jerry. No further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Public hearing and consideration of Resolution Number 1394, master plan adoption, the Community Development Director's Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I will be brief and not go through the entire process, but basically, in accordance with state law, the city of Riverton is required to perform and approve a comprehensive master plan pursuant to Wyoming Statute 15-1-503. The commission, after holding public hearings, shall adopt and certify to the governing body a master plan for the physical development of the city. A notice of public hearing was published on June 26, 2019, prior to our June 2 meeting, and we've all had a chance to review the master plan as presented. With that, I'd answer any questions you might have regarding Resolution 1394.
Would the city clerk please read Resolution 1394 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed Resolution Number 1394, a resolution of the city of Riverton adopting the 2019 Riverton Master Plan.
You were betting I was going to skip that, weren't you?
No.
Thank you, I appreciate that. The chair would entertain a motion to open a public hea-
I'm moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Schatz has her motion, and the second is by Councilman Larson. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I now declare a public hearing open. The public hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statute and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and to identify yourself for the record. Thank you, gentlemen.
I'm Jerry Kessler, this is Ron Warpeness, and we're here because we are talking about the beautification of our community and how to make it more attractive when people come in. And 13 years ago, when we redid Riverton's Main Street, we were on the committee, we attended well over 100 meetings. One of the things that we discussed at that time was a beautiful fountain in the city park. We've continued working on it, we haven't given up our hopes and dreams of having such a beautiful welcoming to our downtown area. The fountain was designed that it would have waterfalls, not shooting up fountains, but waterfalls, rocks, trees that would typify the area around Riverton. We started working on this, we've had literally hundreds of meetings after we were rejected from shortage of money, that along with music downtown playing on the poles and so forth, but we haven't given up. The original plan was a fountain that was as wide as the Main Street down there in the city park. It was 90 by 100 by 15. It was a feature for the downtown Riverton because of River Town, and that's why we curved the sidewalks and so forth. We wanted to go with the flow and the design of our downtown. Many people spent a lot of time and a lot of money, and we would like to be on record that we are not in the master plan for the park project, and maybe that was our own fault or my fault for not being there and didn't know about it, but we sure don't want to be left out. Seeing the plan that was presented tonight, I think that was a parking lot now instead of a fountain, maybe, but we would like to, we'd like you to reconsider us as being part of that project, and we would like to go ahead and keep working on it. We do have the pumps, the city has our pumps, they've been purchased with the lining, we need dirt, fill dirt, rocks, trees, and some hard work, and we could, we could build this fountain. of a fountain, maybe, but we would like to, we'd like you to reconsider us as being part of that project, and we would like to go ahead and, and keep working on it. We do have the pumps, the city has our pumps, they've been purchased, with the lining, we need dirt, fill dirt, rocks, trees, and some hard work, and we could, we could build this fountain. It was brought to our attention that there are some other funds available in the community, and we would just like it, like to see it come to life before all of us are no longer around here to say, gee, we finally got it done. It's not just something we just ramped up overnight. We've put in a lot of time and effort, and there are still about six of us in the community that started on the original committee. We would like to know the community's support. This isn't something that you're gonna take baths in or splash around in. The water would cascade down, disappear through a grid into the rocks, and recirculate. It's not a bathhouse, it's not a, it is a water feature, and we do feel that it would promote a certain amount of charm to our park, and maybe we could copy it and to do similar, similar projects elsewhere in the community as we expand. Lots of communities have them, this, this could change. It doesn't have to be as large as it was in the beginning. In the beginning, when we were carrying up Main Street, we had lots of fill dirt, and we saw possibilities of a mound of dirt being created there, and instead, we ran out of money and volunteers to work. We, we've had the project, actually, in 2006 was the Centennial Committee Project. They gave us $2,500, which we've been hanging on to. We've had other people give us money, and I guess my question is, how did we get on your list to be on this park master plan so that we can throw out the bone and tempt the community to do something wonderful at the end of our Main Street? Any questions?
Mayor? Mayor Warpness, do you have anything to add?
Mayor Guard, Council, just thank you for the opportunity to come and present this. And Jerry just did a wonderful job giving you an overview of, this has been a long time going, and in 2006, when we had the Centennial for the City of Riverton, this was the Centennial Project, and then we lost funding, there wasn't enough money to do some of the things that we wanted for our Main Street rebuild, and so that was the first one that went away. And it just, we, we have the river pattern in the sidewalks, we don't have any, where the water's coming from, you know, which, which makes sense then. So anyway, I enjoyed the conversation that you were talking about with the roundabouts and whatnot. I remember many discussions with Mr. Urbikite. That was something that Bill wanted desperately for the City of Riverton, was to have a roundabout so that we could join the 20th century, I guess, or something, I don't know. But I certainly agree with Councilman Bailey that every experience I've ever had with the roundabout has not been good. But that's just me. And then when you were talking about the bumpouts on Main Street, you wouldn't believe how many discussions we had in this project with YDOT, how to define, can we have the, the median strips, and on, and on, and on? And bumpouts was a large part of that, and we would paint the sidewalk or out in the road and show this is how big the bumpout's going to be, and then everybody'd try to drive around them, and it was, it was interesting. But we would have room to have a, a cafe right on the sidewalk, in spite of the fact that according to YDOT, you have to have a four-foot section right up against the building, has to be clear for the handicapped, and that's why the river pattern doesn't encroach into that four-foot section. So at any rate, it's been an interesting history with this thing, and I don't know if it'll happen or not. Councilman Schatz asked at one of the meetings the other night if it had to look like this. No, that's just one conceptual drawing that was recommended at the time that made a lot of sense, that we could put bronzes or whatever, you know, to tie our community together and brand it. I think that's one of the things that they were talking about in your master plan, and so, I, I don't know what else to say. If there's any questions or anything, we would certainly, as far as the monies that we had, those have all been accounted for, but as I recall, that monies was transferred to the Skate Park Association. I know the monies I donated, and the money that Brex Gags and whatnot had donated, Gary Burnett, when Tonia passed away, where there was a little bit of money in there, and this was all donated in support of this project. And then when it became apparent that it wasn't going to happen, and Matt Wright was working hard to get his skate feature going, the, the skate park going, why we, I contacted these people, and they all said, yeah, fine, go ahead and move it over. And so we did, and I told Matt, I said, we're gonna make this donation to you with the stipulation that if we ever get this going again, that you and your group are going to help us, and he says, okay, we will. And so I don't know if it'll happen or not, but there's been a lot of horse trading and even trying to get some grant writing, and when Gordon Jenkins was the president of the bank, and he got the First Interstate Bank to donate $11,000 for this project, that was a big deal. And those materials were purchased, the pumps and the liners and everything were purchased out of that money, I, I do know that. But, and then Gordon has moved away from town and never saw that realized, so. At any rate, we, we're just feeling like, now that you're talking about the, the master plan and whatnot, that there needs to be some reference somewhere in here about this as a possibility, not that there's any commitment or anything like that for any funding. I certainly have never expected the city to pay for it. I think that's something that the community, if they want, is going to come together and pay for the darn thing. And we're going to be having a meeting on the 22nd of this month to see if there is community interest out there, and if there's, if Jerry and I show up and we're it, then it's probably gonna die. But if not, if there is a community interest and a willingness to help, then hopefully we can move forward, so. At any rate...
Jerry has, you have $2,600 that we have stashed away from the Centennial Project.
You know more about that than I do.
Yeah, I've got it. Okay.
I was busily adding up here, but it was nice, it's nice to know that these funds were donated to another project. I appreciate that.
I got with Courtney Bolander when she was a clerk here, and I've got all of that documentation about the amount of money, et cetera, et cetera, and that certainly.
You know, we all have a concept of, of what we want in City Park. I think the master plan, Eric, you probably have it on yours, I think what they designed there was a concrete slab approach in the front of that for vendors to put out their, their wares, like at the day in the park, so we wouldn't be trampling Kyle's grass down all the time. And so, that's what's there in their concept. I tried really hard to move the Veterans Park to that same location. I think it's a wonderful junction, I, I really do enjoy pulling up to that intersection and seeing the skaters skate. And so, even in the rendering that you passed around, that would obstruct their vision. And so, I think there's, there's all of us that have different ideas of what we'd like to do. Mayor?
You probably remember when the skate park was looking for where it was going to be posi, positioned in the park. They wanted to have it right next to the road.
That's right.
If they'd had their way, it would be, I mean, you'd just skate right off onto the road, and that, we didn't feel would be safe for the young people to, to do that. And so we moved it back, and I made reference, I think, several times, that no, we wanna protect that area there for the future water feature that's going to go in that area. And so that's one of the reasons that they got moved back a little bit as well.
Well, and for the mouse in your pocket, Matt Wright and I are the ones that drove the stakes where the, the park is right now. And so that's always been premium real estate.
Oh, yeah?
And, and so we're gonna have to work with the people and see what people want, and I would love to have Veterans Park there instead of the, behind the, the building, and, and so...
I certainly agree that, I think the Veterans Park could've come up with a better place, but at that time, that was the best place that, that Bill was able to find in town, and the veterans were a very small group, and they were about ready to lose the VFW post up there anyway, and which they ultimately did. I can say I'm the only person that voted against that selling of the VFW post, but it's another bit of history.
I appreciate the input. Jerry?
This could also be redesigned so that the water feature could be there, and with the flagpoles, and the Veterans Park could be on the backside of it very easily, and still have your skate park. When I was working with Matt, the skate park was gonna be cleared back by the baseball diamond, and it just kept creeping forward. But it could also be redesigned so that it could still be there.
And I think that's why this phrase that we're suggesting putting in there is so important, that if we get a massive group of people that wanna do something and, and are serious and get enough movement, we can do something that people really do want. If we don't, that's where we're at.
I think the main reason I'm here is that we would like to be part of that master plan instead of not being heard.
Yeah.
So, otherwise, I don't know what we're gonna do with the money. I know there's always people that want money, but it was designated for that.
Yeah, and, and I know you'll do what's good with the money, but let's, let's move forward, and we, we've come to that point that we need to approve this plan, and I think if we put that in there, it leaves it open for other people to come forward and present something to future councils, or to this council, that would make sense. Seeing no other participants, Your Honor, I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Bailey, and a second from Councilman Larson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. The motion is passed. The Chair would entertain a motion to remove the considerate, consideration of Resolution Number 1394 from the table. So moved.
Second.
Councilman Bailey has the motion, Councilman, Councilwoman Schatz has the second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Motion on the table was moved by Councilman, Councilmember Borders and seconded by Councilmember Hancock to approve Resolution Number 1394. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, I would like to amend that we add the language that the City Minister has, has given to us to the master plan.
Second.
We have an amendment from Councilman Bailey, and seconded by Councilwoman Schatz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. So now we're back to the, the vote, all in favor on the original motion, say aye.
Is it the amendment, Your Honor?
As amended.
As amended.
Aye.
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 Whoops, I added Cory to the group. Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Consideration for Heirs and Associates Contract Amendment. Would the Chair, the Chair would entertain a motion to remove Heirs, Heirs and Associates Contract Amendment from the table.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Hancock, a second from Councilman Bailey. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The motion on the table was moved by Councilman, Councilmember Schatz, seconded by Councilmember Borders, and approved Amendment Number One to the Riverton Comprehensive Master Plan Contract with Heirs Associates, Inc. Is there any discussion? Is that, is that what, how do you want that read? It's in yellow.
Yes, Your Honor.
Is there any further discussion?
I guess we, this was envisioning that they were gonna be here talking on the phone and future changes to it, as it's already been envisioned, correct? I mean, if, if we were to vote this down, they're not gonna be out anything, we're still gonna be paying our bills with them. Your Honor? Yes, this was envisioned as we were gonna do extra work and they were going to be on the phone, that's why it was tabled. You've passed the resolution, and now if they have, so the recommendation at this point would turn to be, to vote down the amendment, and let, if they wanted to propose something lesser to cover any additional costs that they had during putting the, putting items together for council, then they could propose that, and then you would vote on that later on.
So we wanna, we wanna oppose this, so we don't pick up any additional costs, is that what, I see heads bobbing?
Yes.
Counsel, understand that?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion fails, one to five. We are clear to adjournment, are we, are you good with that?
Yes, Your Honor.
The Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn the special council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Borders and a second by Councilman Hancock. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. The motion is passed. This meeting of the Riverton City Council stands, stands adjourned at 8:07.